...for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote call?
Mr. Oates?
Here.
Mr. Feist? Dr. Sinek?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polikowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here. All present, citizens comments? Daniel Wise?
Hello ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Wise. I'm a 1972 graduate of Southmoreland. I ran cross-country in track and I wanted to talk about the past season at track and field. Young ladies and men again won their section, which is nice, but they do it every year. And it's what it is. The section, it's very weak that they're in. And they need more competition. And they're not going to any big invitational meets. And what really upset me was they did not go to the Westmoreland County Coaches Association meet this year. And then when they did go to the WPAL track meet, they got smoked, just like they smoked everybody else. And I think, nothing against Coach Shrek, I know him, but I think he's gotten a little complacent and I think it's time for like some new blood. And further discussions are down the road, you can talk it over, whatever, but my opinion, I think you need to open the head tracking field coach job. That's all I have to say.
Personnel matter, I mean, if you're advocating a change in back policy, but to be directly towards an individual, it's a personnel matter for the board.
Okay, yeah. Well, just my opinion about, he's not taking them to any invitationals. They're not getting the competition that they need because the section is so weak. And then when they do to go to the WPALs, they're not used to the big competition and they can't handle it. And they've got some really good young people there and they're not able to further their talents or have the pressure on them to be pushed. They're not being pushed at the individual track meets. So, that's all I said. He's just a little complacent, that's all. Nothing personal against him. He's been there, he's had a nice run and I thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
James Thirtz?
Good evening, board, men and women. There's a lot of people in the state, here in Scottsdale, that are on fixed wages. Fixed wages. And I'm one. And I'm asking, why do you want to raise more taxes? Can somebody stand up and say that? This is my first time here and I want to know why you're going to raise the taxes. Okay? Somebody stand up and say something?
One thing about...
Okay, stand up.
I'll stand. In eight years, the taxes haven't been raised in this school.
We should have a dialogue.
Right?
It's the citizens comments, not dialogue.
Okay.
What? Just brought to my attention, it's citizens comments, so they can make comments, but...
Well, he wanted somebody to give him an answer.
Well, he's... Speakers are entitled to come up and speak. They don't have a statutory right to engage in a debate with individual school board members. If individual school board members choose to respond to it, that's up to you, but that could be done later.
He just did.
After the speakers have spoken.
He just did choose.
I said later.
Or now. Why, why later?
Because he's got five minutes and now we're using up his five minutes or not using it up.
I stopped the clock, Ross, so if you're speaking, anybody can say?
So, I mean...
So, what I'm asking is, do you really have to go higher?
Are we not going to...
Nobody has really said anything.
On that tonight?
I'm sorry, I can't hear some of you people up there.
I was just asking, Mr. President, on our agenda, are we not going over the budget again, one more time? Will we be discussing the budget again tonight? So, we will be discussing this tonight and I'm sure your answers will be, you'll have your answer after we go over our discussion. It's going to be presented, he's going to, Mr. Salem's going to present more information for us to make a better decision and he'll give us information on how we know whether yes or no. So, you'll get that answer. Nothing's been, nothing's being decided tonight. This is a plan, it's a discussion meeting, planning. We're getting more information gathered tonight and then you'll know next week, yes or no.
But still, whenever you raise your taxes, you're still hurting the people, it's on a fixed rate.
We understand.
I make thirteen thousand a year. And when the school teachers retire, how much do they make?
Well, that's not the issue right now. The issue is, is we're going to get all the information tonight for us to make a good decision.
Why is she talking if Feist wasn't allowed to talk? I don't get this.
People were inviting it and she responded. You know, you want to stop, you want to stop everybody or not?
So did he.
No, we don't want to stop anybody from talking.
No, I'm talking about the board members getting involved with the debate.
Let's talk.
What I'm, what I'm asking is that there has to be some places where you don't have to add money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sharon Barkley?
Hi, everybody, I'm back again. This time, I wanted to let you know, I've been talking to a lot of people in the Southmoreland School District. I have papers that they do not want this pay hike, the tax hike. I have one person, I'll be honest, I have one person that located, one person. All the rest of them have some remarks that they said, if you want to balance your budget, try decreasing administration and teachers' pay. And here's exclamation marks and it says, "We don't get the raises that you do." And I have, and this is just the start of it. I've talked to other people and they're sending me them. I've taken them everywhere and I'm going to continue to do it till the next meeting. Some of these people are senior citizens and aren't able to come. But I want you to really, really think what you're going to do to this district if you keep doing the pay, I mean, these hikes, I mean, giving the teachers raises, you know, up our taxes. You've got to start thinking about the people. You're supposed to represent us. Please, think about that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Collins?
This is just ongoing from last meeting. I got over three hundred forms here, Southmoreland tax surveys. These are people that just not could be able to come to this meeting. And three-quarters of these people are on a fixed income. And it means they have to be working the night shift or whatever they had to do, that's what they have to do to get by. If you just would like to see these, or you just want them to make copies or keep them, just so you know, the people are, they do want to get involved, they can't. But they're fighting for one thing and that's our taxes.
I think you should give them to the business manager.
A lot of these people that are on here just asked the same question this one gentleman did too, about, he's on a fixed income of a little over nine thousand dollars a year. Nine thousand dollars for him to run his life, his business, I mean, his monthly bills, car payment, whatever he has, is not a lot of money. Matter of fact, it's only a fraction, a small, small, small fraction of what some of you make here. Consider these taxes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Feliciterl, after ruling on the next speaker, please. Okay, the request topic is free speech, First Amendment, and the Sunshine Law. The name of the requested speaker is, I'm going to have trouble pronouncing this, Molina Sayovic. Today's date, June fourteenth, twenty twelve, representing Citizens for Press. The address is two twenty-one Eighth Street, Blonox, P A, one five two three eight, phone number, states, strikes out, the person's a resident of the Southmoreland School District. And states that I am a resident of Pennsylvania following the address. That's left blank. But the address above says Blonox, so are you a resident of Blonox?
The address is Blonox, which belongs to Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania, within the side of Allegheny County.
Where do you reside?
And all the taxes, excuse me, sir?
Where do you reside?
In Pennsylvania.
Where in Pennsylvania?
In the town of Blonox, borough of Blonox.
Blonox in Allegheny County?
Yes, sir.
Well, I've been asked for a legal ruling and my interpretation is that, you know, the residency refers to the residency of the, this district, Southmoreland School District. Southmoreland School District collects real estate taxes and locally earned income tax and a occupational privilege tax. We pay an occupational privilege tax to Southmoreland.
There is sixty-four percent of the taxes that are coming to this school district, it's coming from outside of your district.
Well, you can certainly address the state, you know, if the state has public meetings, but we don't collect that tax.
But I am addressing you as a member of press, sir.
Press, sir?
I'm addressing you, sir, that I'm a member of press and I'm addressing a school board tonight as a press member and American citizen.
Well, as a, you can attend the meeting and you can report on it, but you don't have a statutory right to speak to the school board if you don't meet one of the criteria that's been established under the...
When I filed my federal law...
And under, we did have a slightly expanded version of that here. Are you an employee of the school district?
When I filed my federal lawsuit in behalf of the Pennsylvania, it does not matter, I want the federal lawsuit in behalf of Pennsylvania, so every American citizen in the state of Pennsylvania can participate in open public meetings.
Texas could come here and address the school board, or from Allegheny County, this is Southmoreland School District, so I don't think you qualify to speak.
You have no right to rob our children of their future. We are here to speak on behalf of the press of American citizens.
You may report that I'm ruling that you don't have a legal right to stand on to demand to address the school board of Southmoreland School District.
If this is what your opinion is? If this is what your opinion is, sir, we will speak after I call my attorney. So, I think you're, you're kind of making mistake for not allowing me speak now, because when I come back next time, I will bring another federal lawsuit.
Well, that's up to you and if you bring a frivolous lawsuit, you may find a counterpoint.
Well, I need you to, please, sir, tell me where exactly in your statutes, show me the paperwork so that we can speak eye to eye now.
Well, I told you, it's in the Sunshine Law and in our local policy, you don't seem to meet any of the provisions.
Well, you are violating Sunshine Law for not letting American citizens speak at your meeting, open public meeting.
I don't think I am. I think what debated it.
Mr. President, where is our policy and how, could you read it to us?
I just want to let you know that I observed some YouTube videos that you disallow the school board member, Dr. Feig, to speak. And she lives here and she has full right to defend her residents and protect them and ask questions where the taxpayers' money is going. So, I just want to let you know, if you shut me down, you have to let any school members hear, because I'm going to watch it and I'm going to report it. And I'm going, I'm recording it, sir.
Board requires the public participant be residents of this district, or anyone having registered a legitimate interest in a contemplated action of the board, anyone representing a group in the community or school district, any representative of a firm eligible to bid on materials or services solicited by the board, any employee of the district, or pupil of the district.
She has a legitimate concern. Read that again, the legitimate concern.
And when was that registered and how was it registered?
We already discussed the matter somewhat through, so what's the big deal if I just read one page to you?
Well, you know, are you representing some other group? Are you an attorney?
I'm an American citizen.
I understand that, I didn't challenge that, that you're not in front of Congress, you're in front of Southmoreland School District.
I'm on behalf of all those children that you guys supposed to represent and, and all the taxpayers of this community. Because if I don't speak for them and I don't speak for my home, who's going to do it? How about your children, sir? Are you concerned about their future? This is everybody's mutual interest.
Well, you seem to be advocating that anyone in the United States can go into any school district and...
State of Pennsylvania, sir.
In the state of Pennsylvania.
It's a Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. It's under Pennsylvania Sunshine.
I think you're reading it too broadly. So, that's my line.
So, we've had a ruling, so we're going to minutes?
So, you're not being recognized, Neil?
Yeah, why don't you take a vote? And let the members decide?
At the meeting of June twenty-seventh...
I'd like to make a motion that we wrote on whether or not, whether or not Molina is permitted to speak today.
We already moved on, we already moved on.
I made a motion.
We already moved on.
Wait, 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 is the solicitor running this meeting or is Mike Benz running this meeting?
He's running.
Then let him run. He didn't ask you, you're supposed to keep quiet until you ask a question.
He asked me for an opinion, Mr. Alt.
I'd like to.
Superintendent passed the card and asked for a ruling, to see what the solicitor thought. So, he was asked, it's not like he...
Now, you had a motion, what is your basis for denying that motion in a second?
It's not a voting, it wasn't a voting meeting.
So, we can't make any decisions? Is it a planning meeting?
This is a legitimate meeting.
Can we vote?
I, I was trying to give my opinion when you interrupted, Mr. Alt.
Well, I'm telling you, you don't talk until you're asked.
Oh, come on, please.
Mike, I'll direct it to the president. Mr. President, I think you've made an erroneous ruling. I think the fair thrust of what the comment was from Dr. Feig was that she's appealing the ruling of the chair, as had happened at the last meeting, and that to sustain a ruling would now have a vote. And if it's voted that the, your ruling is upheld, then we're done.
So...
You're not voting to suspend on this procedural procedure, ma'am?
We're voting yes or no. Yes means...
You have called the ruling of the chair.
Which is, we move on to minutes. No means, Dr. Feig's motion, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Just everybody's clear on what...
My motion is to allow her to speak.
Yeah.
Mr. President, we need a second.
No, you don't have a second. And if you do, Mr. Alt already made it, so we need to move on.
So, you vote yes to uphold the decision of the chair, vote no to let her speak with what Dr. Feig...
No, that is not my motion, Mike, don't change the words. My words are, I make a motion to allow Melinda Brayevich to speak to the board.
He says you're challenging the motion.
There's, there's already been a ruling. If you want to appeal the ruling, and I took it as an appeal, now if you're making a grand new motion, and that's what you really intend to do, then you're bypassing your opportunity to object. And it's going to be waived. So, I suggest you take...
I make the motion that the ruling that Mr. Petonic made is not accurate and I believe that the Speaker, Melinda Brayevich, should be given the right to address the board.
Now, you get the rule on the propriety of motion.
Does that do it? Does that do it?
Well, that's now a motion, so you do need a second.
I second.
Do we get roll call?
And we are saying the same thing before, yes to uphold the opinion of the chair, or no to let her speak.
Now, I'm going to ask the secretary to read the motion.
I have no idea. I'm confused.
I believe that the ruling made by the solicitor is not correct and therefore I move that Melinda Brayevich be given permission to speak to the board.
Yes means she talks, no means she won't. Right.
You need to remember this.
I still have a freedom of press too, sir.
So, we want to uphold...
No. Yes means the speaker gets to speak. A vote of no means the speaker does not get to speak. And walks away from the podium.
Okay, got it.
Discussion on the motion, please. Come on. I want to remind them that Speaker has told us that she has filed and won a federal lawsuit for free speech and that she recommends the taxpaying citizens of the state of Pennsylvania. I wish to remind the board of those facts.
Can I discuss also?
Sure.
Okay. But we also need reminded that our school policy says that you must be a resident of the district. And also, when we're going with the recommendation of a lawyer, who I was blasted several times, many a times, for wanting to go against him, well, you, Dr. Feig, if you remember that, on several occasions last year. So, we are paying them lots of money, they have all the education, they know the law. And I, how can... So, okay, if I say yes, she talks, if I say no, she doesn't.
Right, now, I beg your pardon, but just so it's clear, you can be either a resident of the district or a taxpayer of the district. You don't have to be both.
And she's neither.
My interpretation and my ruling is that Southmoreland School District only has the kinds of taxes which I prescribed and the Honorable Speaker has indicated that she does not pay those kinds of taxes. She pays taxes to the state of Pennsylvania. Since the school district does not assess those taxes, nor collect those taxes, I believe that she is not qualified to speak based on that criteria.
Mr. Petonic, does the school district accept those taxes?
Absolutely.
There you go.
And if they wanted to phrase it that way, they could have. Congress, many times, in enacting legislation, will say that if you are a recipient of government funds, then you get, that you're regulated, or you can be sued, or you get certain benefits. That's not the way the statute was written. So, that's why I don't feel that the mere fact that the state of Pennsylvania, through the state legislature, assesses the tax and collects it and then decides to send it to Southmoreland School District, or Derry, or to the state police, necessarily implicates that person as having a right to speak under the Sunshine Law.
Mr. Petonic, does our policy supersede the Constitution of the United States that guarantees free speech?
Free speech, I want you to understand that not everyone has a right to come in before a public body and take up the public body's time. Pennsylvania has enacted what seems to equate to a limited, not a complete, but a limited public forum. And there are restrictions on that forum, the time, the amount of speech, and who is qualified or permitted to speak. So, you can go to the public park and speak all you want about anything that you want, provided that it is not illegal. Pennsylvania has a limited public forum. And so, it's not a direct constitutional issue, it is a statutory construction issue.
And I would say it's not a statutory issue, I'd say it's a moral issue, the right to free speech.
I would request a vote, but just to say this, there are many, many forums, judicatory on a federal level, state level, municipal level, which I pay taxes, we all pay taxes. We have orderly government and I could not speak in many of those and I'm glad I can't. I totally support, without following the procedures and the policy, I totally support the solicitor's ruling.
I'm going to ask again, will you please read that part about the concern, the legitimate concern? How is that phrased? Please?
I've already read it, if you would like to read it...
May I just, board, for a second, to ask for permission if I can...
The section we're moving to is now...
Could we have, are you...
Let's have a vote.
While you're reading?
It's nine oh three.
It's nine oh three.
Nine oh three? I wouldn't want to trouble you to do it.
Can we move on to the court?
Roll call, please.
Um, yes, if the speaker has...
No, 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 I'm still discussing the motion.
How long are we going to be held, Congressman?
As a member of press, can I ask questions in the end of the meeting?
Anyone registering a legitimate interest in a contemplated action of the board.
I don't know what the contemplated action of the board is, it was identified.
The contemplated action of the board is to speak on the issues that affect this school district. Anything is a contemplated action of the board.
Well, we're not passing the First Amendment.
Find out.
And that was what was identified.
It's vote.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beist?
No.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
No.
Mrs. Love?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Polikowski?
No.
Mrs. Rose?
No.
Mr. Benz?
No. Motion fails, two to seven. Move on to minutes. At the June twenty-seventh meeting, you'll be asked to approve the minutes from the May tenth and the May twenty-fourth meetings.
Mr. Solicitor, can I address the school board in the area and with the questions?
We will be asked to approve the treasurer's report for May two thousand and twelve and the revenue report for two thousand and twelve. Discussion on the budget will turn...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Moving over to Mr. Salem at this time.
Where are we on the minutes here? You're running through the minutes, I have a question on the minutes. Don't talk about the minutes.
Well, I don't know if you can or not, Dr. Feig, the minutes have been, are two steps ahead of you there.
Wait a minute, I want to talk about the minutes of the school board that were presented in my package.
I'll then ask them.
It's my meeting as well as anybody else's.
It's Mr. Benz's decision.
I want to read this, now. Mr. Petonic, are the minutes the official record of this school district and what happens at these, this meeting and what just is going on here, right? This is the official record of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Kaufman stated she is proud of what we are doing in this district and reminded everyone that for one and a half years, Dr. Molnar worked for free...
Excuse me, can you touch between your readings, but I'll follow them.
The minutes of May tenth.
Which page?
Three of seven.
Paragraph?
Bottom of the page. Bottom of the page. This is an official document. Mrs. Kaufman stated she is proud of what we are doing in this district, and reminded everyone that for one and a half years, Dr. Molnar worked for free when he took over for Dr. Haffill. I want to discuss that. You worked for free, Jack?
I did not work for free, but as you so eloquently stated at a board meeting on the evening that I was appointed Superintendent, I did the Superintendent's draw as well as my own without asking for extra remuneration.
That would be fine. I would very much welcome that in here, but Josie Kaufman said you worked for free for a year and a half.
That's what she said.
That's what she said.
Yeah. So the minutes are correct.
Yeah, so it's incorrect, why didn't you change it when I said it?
No, no, this is what you said. This is what you said. My objection is that this is going down as an official record.
So it was, it was actually free for the Superintendent wages, in addition to, so change it to what you just said, that's fine, that'd be a problem.
No, this is, this is what you said.
Okay, so it was a mistake, I guess, in how it was interpreted, so let's change it to how-
You vote for these minutes, Josie, that's what you're voting for.
So do you want to have our Secretary chair, let's have the Secretary chair?
Nope, that's what you said, that's what you said.
Is this going to be a fight the whole night?
Oh, we should ignore that, Josie.
No, I said, let's change it.
There you go.
Let's change it, honey, let's change it.
Let's move on.
I'm not changing it, I made a mistake, it was misinterpreted wrong.
It was misinterpreted. Okay, let's go.
In the past two weeks, I've continued to work on the budget. The budget deficit is down to about $375,000, but of course, that still includes the tax increase that we had talked about at the final budget proposal. There was discussion about fund balance, I included some fund balance information in with your board packs, and also received a survey today from my fellow business managers. With the, with the tax increase, we'll still be the third lowest tax in the county of Westmoreland. Third lowest village in the county.
Are you sure, Senator?
That's all.
Can we go over this chart?
Oh, sure, that's a good idea, I'm sorry.
What was included in our board pack, three different scenarios?
I'll pass this around, I'll review this with the Board. It's the little three scenarios that I had included in your board packet, and it has the highlighted, the yellow highlighted sections. Scenario one basically takes a $26 million budget, with a beginning fund balance of $8 million, and it increases spending at a rate of 2.5% per year. Government funding is flat, and local tax revenue increases flat. Under scenario one, in four years, our fund balance will be down to zero. In scenario two, again, beginning fund balance of 26, I'm sorry, beginning budget of $26 million, beginning fund balance of $8 million, again, budgetary increases of 2.5% per year, assuming a flat government subsidy, but increasing taxes at a rate of, local taxes at a rate of 2.5% per year, we, our fund balance stretches out a little bit further, about four and a half years. Now, scenario three shows the same thing, beginning budget $26 million, beginning fund balance of $8 million, budgetary increases are held to 1%, again, funding from the government is level, and local taxes increase at 2.5%. At the end of eight years, the fund balance goes, is at zero. The gist of this is that with prudent fiscal management, by keeping expenses low, by trying to keep a lid on expenses, and by increasing taxes at a rate of 2.5%, we can sustain this district longer than if we don't increase taxes, and the budget keeps increasing.
Question, Bill.
Yes, Ken.
Is this accurate, that we have an $8 million budget surplus?
Well, also included-
I thought we had a lot less than that, and if that's the case, then we'll be running out of money a lot sooner than that.
This is just showing four year, or eight years. If you, if you receive this packet, it has a GASB in the front. GASB stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. As you know, if you read this, the fund balance definitions have changed, effective with the year-end 2011. At the year-end 2011, you'll see in the very back of that packet, our fund balance at that time included all the three, the three lowest categories, the three least restrictive categories of fund balance, unassigned, assigned, and committed. At the end of 2011, those three combined fund balances totaled almost $8 million, and I believe Mr. Porter said as much. In the interim, over the last 12 months almost, we have spent significant amount of that fund balance, large part on the maintenance building, and the demolition of the junior high school. So I don't believe at this time our fund balance is $8 million.
So this would not be accurate?
This wasn't meant to be an accurate portrayal of our current finances, just an illustrative-
Yeah, but doesn't that lead us to false hope? If this is only $2 million instead of $8 million, then we're going to run out of money a lot sooner than in your four-year plan.
Well, it's not $2 million, it's probably closer to $6 million. But as I said, it was just for illustrative purposes, since we're all familiar with the $8 million, I thought I'd start there.
Mr. Salem, I have two questions. Number one, it's been a big mystery to me, but can you specifically identify for me everything that was cut in our budget, so I can write it down?
You know what, Dr. Feig, I don't have the information with me.
Bill, nobody on the Board knows what's been cut.
Well, I think we all reviewed that at the last meeting.
Tell me.
Again, Dr. Feig, I didn't bring that with me.
Okay, let's do this, then. There are five categories of budget. Tell me what, for each one of us, for each one in our district, what is the non-spendable? That's item number one.
There is none. None.
Committed?
That's the early-
Retirement.
Retirement, E-RIPs.
Anything else?
No.
Assigned?
Assigned is money that's designated for future use.
I know what it is. What have, what have you assigned our money to?
Mr. Porter has assigned that money for future mediation of health insurance increases and pension increases. That's the money available to us, for whatever we deem.
And how much is that?
Well, at the end of last, at 2011, it was 1.567 million.
When was that date?
June 11, June 30th, 2011.
Can't be. He went to Harrisburg and gave an $8 million fund balance in October. Now that can't be.
Well, that, that date was effective, the date he gave in October was effective June 30th, 2011, because that was our last audit of financial statement.
That's what you just said, $1,567 for June of 11.
Yes.
Which one is it, then?
Well, again, as I tried to explain to you in this sheet, there are three categories of fund balance. All three together are almost $8 million. The unassigned total is 1.56 million.
So we went from $8 million to 1.5 million?
No. If you add, if you have your calculator handy, I'll give you the numbers, 1.389 million plus 5 million-
What's the 1.389 million for?
That's the committed.
That's what I was asking, that's the committed.
Right.
That's the pension bonuses-
That's the E-RIPs.
Retirement bonuses.
And assigned is 5 million, and unassigned is 1.56-
Assigned is 5 million?
Yes.
What's in there?
5 million. There's, it's just, it's a-
Health and pensions, 5 million, Bill?
Yeah.
Don't care pensions, I believe capital-
Future, future use.
Capital projects.
Capital, capital projects, because they-
What capital projects? What capital project?
Well, for example, the maintenance bill will come out of that.
Isn't that paid for yet?
Well, no, frankly. My, Dr. Feig, if you remember again, this is as of June 30th, 2011, so this is almost a year old.
See, Bill, this is what bothers me, and nobody will give me an answer. On October 19th, he said the fund balance was $8 million at the end of June 11th.
Right. Isn't that what I just said?
It's all those added together, all those numbers added together.
At the end of each fiscal year, when you reconcile the books, the fund balance changes as of June 30th of the year.
I talked to Dr. Dana DeVar at PSBA, he's the Director of Research Services, and he told me that apparently, when this fund balance was given in Harrisburg, it was not correct. There are things that should have never even been in there. Guess the ace in the hole did that one, and there are no, no figures now that I can go back to, because the figure he gave contained things that he said should have never been in there. For example, once our Board took a vote, and we said, "This is the money for the bonuses for people who retire," that money should have been gone, out of the fund balance. Apparently, he was still including it.
Well, it's committed for use.
It goes away, once it's, it's no longer available money. Okay, apparently, Dr. David DeVar doesn't know what he's talking about. That's all I can say. What were the cuts that were made, again? And it, you made, what, $300,000 in cuts?
No, the deficit's still $375,000.
Yeah, but it went from $600 and some, right?
Yes.
What were those?
Well, part of it was the additional funding that we received from the bond issue, part of it is a personnel decrease.
Tell me that.
It's personnel.
It was on our packet. The cut?
That's just happening now, at 66.5.
Okay, what else? What are the other cuts?
Thanks again, Dr. Feig, I had that information at the office, I'll be glad to give it to you tomorrow.
You don't bring it to the meeting, Bill?
You have the same information from our budget meeting, you had. So you could be disaffiliated or not bring it in?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't bring anything to the meetings.
Dr. Molnar, can you give us some insight on what was cut, on the $300,000?
We cut a little bit out of the supply budgets. We'll talk about some additional cuts in personnel. There were some cuts in the area of technology. Healthcare costs did not rise to the extent that we expected them to, so that was good So those are some of the things.
I think I reviewed all those at the last meeting.
Right.
But the last meeting-
There were also some, some cuts made at the athletic department, and I believe we were eliminating a bus.
Books, the books.
Right, a bus, a bus.
Yeah, but that was all before. You've gone down since that meeting, right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking about. What happened after that?
I just reviewed those with you. The additional funding from the bond issue, and the personnel.
And that was $300,000?
No, it went from-
You said it was six something last time.
No, I believe I said it was five.
Well, at this time, I would like to make a request to make a PowerPoint presentation concerning this budget.
You have to rule on it, Mike.
Does the Board want to hear it? I'm not a dictator, I'm supposed to be leading the meeting, so if the Board has five votes, we'll do it, it's not-
No, it's up to you, it's up to you.
I'm not any dictator, I'm just President of the General.
It's us, it's up to you. You're the President.
Yeah, Mike, the procedure I was, was passed on from Dr. Molnar to the Solicitor, who passed the buck to you, so I'm waiting, yeah or no. Don't look for somebody else to make the decision, Mike. Am I going to be able to present a PowerPoint presentation, yes or no? If you say no, then I will be quiet.
And the President's not supposed to be a dictator, if you read-
We didn't ask if you're a dictator.
You're not a dictator, Mike, I'm asking for-
We asked for a decision.
A decision from the Board President.
A decision.
President decides, he decides.
You people, please be quiet, so we can have an orderly meeting.
So you wanted to ask me, you wanted to comment on? It's basically your discretion, because it's not something that is required either in the School Code or the Sunshine Act, nor in our Board policy. Based upon that, you have the discretion as Board President to decide whether a request from a Board Member, which is somewhat different, but not completely different from the member of the public, to do a PowerPoint presentation. My, my comment on that, insofar as the legalities is concerned, is that if you permit it for one School Board Member, then you have to permit it for all School Board Members going forward. If you deny, we'll against it, and especially if that would be upheld on the vote, then the same would run true for other School Board Members. So, but you have the initial decision, it is your discretion to do it either way.
I will honor Mr. Alt, but if the crowd gets out of control like they did last meeting during the presentation, it's done, the total will come back up.
I have no control over the crowd, so don't give that, then you'll stop it if they crack this.
They're all part of your group.
They're no part of mine, they're all part of them. Do you people hear that? You're part of a group? Are you not that type of people? Thank you. I'll need your AV man to come up here and help me with this.
He has to put down the screen, he has to put down the screen.
Oh, he's not part of the group.
Is he refusing to help you?
He's running, he's doing his thing.
What did you say?
He said somebody has to walk in. I don't know who somebody is.
Oh, somebody log in, then.
The President has made a ruling, so we should probably move along with the rule.
Does anybody know who's going to log in?
They're coming in.
And you'll do the flipping for me? Grab yourself a chair, we'll try. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming today. I think everybody knows who I am, but if you don't, I'm Ken Old, I sit on the board. And you'll forgive me if I get a little sloppy here sometime, I'm a little under the weather today, but I think I can get through this. I want to demonstrate a study here, or explain a study, of failure to plan by the Southmoreland School District, facilities, finance, and future. You can flip it. Since 2001, enrollment has declined by 436 students. At a ratio of one to 20 teachers, teacher to student ratio, we would need 22 teachers less than we did in 2001. At this time, one teacher costs us, on average, with their salaries and their benefits, about $84,000 a year. And if you took that times 22, that would be $1,848 million. And what I do want to tell everyone is, we've taken some great liberties to be very conservative. So, when I slipped, stepped down to approximately 1 million, so I don't confuse anybody, it really is that 1,848, but what we've decided to do is, because of new hires, to reduce that number. So over the years, this would have been approximately about a million dollars a year, allowing for lower salaries in the early years. Declining enrollment has continued for 40 years as the baby boomers graduated from school. I looked at the chart, and there has been a steady increase, never an increase, a steady decrease since 1970. Administration has failed to address declining enrollment and continues to overstaff Southmoreland at all levels of employment, and refuses to do critical planning for the future of Southmoreland School District. Proper management would have decreased teaching staff by one to two teachers each year. And that doesn't mean to fire or furlough anybody. If you would have had good managers, and the end of the year came, and somebody retired, you had to do with what you had to do with and move on, and not replace those positions. And that's over many years. Next, please. Our highly-paid administrators ignored the trend at a great taxpayer waste and expense. And again, since 1970, down, but spending went up. For several years, we had enrollment losses of over 100 students each year, which translates into five or six less teachers. Next. Declining enrollment will continue, and is projected to decline another 110 students over the next five years. At a one to 20 teacher-student ratio, that means we'll need five less teachers by 2017. Does this administration have a plan to contain cost consistent with this enrollment decline? Next, please. Let me catch up. Declining enrollment obviously means fewer buildings. Our high school has capacity for 1,030 students. Today, we have 646 students at the high school, that's 384 empty seats. Since 2001, with less than 1,000 students at the high school, there has been a ton of underutilized and unused space. Next, please. Keeping the administration building open costs us about $100,000 a year. The administration building should have been closed 12 years ago, and those offices moved to the underutilized high school space, and the building could have been sold for cash asset or renting. That's another $1,200,000 in waste. Next, please. We have the new Scottsdale campus, our elementary and middle school. When ground was broken on this $60 million building project, we were already overbuilding for the number of students we would have in the future. Remember, this didn't just jump on us, 1970, down, down, down every year. Yet, we're building, building, building. There's no excuse for the new debt of the magnitude that was put on the backs of taxpayers in spite of the assertion that new, that building, new schools attracts new residents. The new school was a $60 million abuse of taxpayer money. Next, please. In 2008, when construction finished at Scottsdale, we had a capacity for 1,416 students in Scottsdale, an additional 375 at Elverton Primary Center. Southmoreland School District had 2,146 students in declining enrollment. We were overbuilt in 2008 by 675 students at that time. As of today, we're overbuilt by 860 students, that's 860 seats out there waiting to be occupied. By 2017, many years before it will be paid off, we can shutter more than half of the new building, as the total enrollment will have dropped to 1,851 students. And we will then be 970 students overbuilt. Next, please. Present building capacity is 2,821. Present enrollment is 1,961. We presently have building capacity for 860 students who do not exist. There has been no planning for any building consolidation or reconfiguration by the administration. The administration has never initiated discussions on this issue with the board to date. And having said that, as of this day, it is now on the budget that we're going to look at closing the administration building. So, that is not accurate, we are actually going to have it on our agenda tonight. So that is a step in the right direction, and I'm glad it's being addressed. Next, please. In 2008, when the Scottsdale campus was completed, we had a capacity for 1,416 elementary students. We should have closed Elverton with the opening of the new campus. Underutilizing both Scottsdale campus and Elverton, Scott, or Elverton, costs taxpayers about $1,500,000 a year, times five years, that's another waste of $7,500,000. Next, please. Administrative services are costing us nearly $1,800,000 per year. For what? And I, I don't want to make this a personal attack, but it seems like Dr. Fike and I are the only ones trying to get at the facts and the figures to try and contain these costs with enrollment declines and taxpayers' inability to pay these rising taxes. Next, please. Taxpayer waste and abuse resulting from declining enrollment and underutilized space since 2001 equals overstaffed teachers? $1 million. Administration building being kept open at 100,000, 100,000 times 12 years, $1,200,000. New school for 1,416 elementary students, overbuilt by 860 of students today, an unnecessary cost of $20 million. Again, we took great liberties, the building cost us $60 million. It would be unrealistic to say that we didn't, that we had enough room, we didn't, we needed to do something. We either had to add on something, or upgrade, or whatever, but not to the tune of building a new $60 million school. So that's why we dropped it from 60 to 20, because we knew that sometime in the past, we should have updated or put on some additional building somewhere, but not a new school. Elverton kept open, per year calculation, for five years, that's $7,500,000. So conservatively, we've overspent $30,548,000. Next, please. 3 million, 30,548 is just a fraction of what mismanagement of Southmoreland School District is costing taxpayers. If you go on YouTube and watch Dr. Fike's presentation from May 12th that she was not allowed to give here, stress the need for a grassroots cost containment effort led by this board and the community. So far, administration has failed to do this for us. All district employees have a conflict of interest when it comes to cost containment, as it involves appropriate teaching and administrative ratios achieved by furlough. Please. Administration has demonstrated their unwillingness to contain costs as we are overstaffed, overbuilt, and $30,548,000 overspent. Next, please. Long-range planning for Southmoreland School District has not and does not currently exist. Over the years, it was the responsibility of the school board to monitor and direct the administration to take action to assure appropriate staffing levels. That clearly hasn't been the case. I was on the board before, it was not the case then, and I don't believe it's the case now. I don't know whether somebody's not taking us seriously, I mean, these teachers have sacrificed in their contract, but I, I, I think that the- I mean, these teachers have sacrificed in their contract, but I think that the administration has to say, wait a minute, it's our turn to step up to the plate and start doing what needs to be done. With declining enrollment, we should have seen expenses and tax reductions, not increases, reductions. Instead, we get more taxing and increased spending. Next, please. In conclusion, Southmoreland School District owes about $48 million in mortgage payments to the year 2029, when public education may not even exist as we know it in the brick-and-mortar form. Southmoreland School District also owes $2 million plus in pension bonuses, while the teacher salaries increased in three years, a little less than $1,991,000, in spite of the fact that we have significantly fewer students to teach. Next, please. Our suggestion is a committee of the school board to be formed to present recommendations and solutions consistent with declining enrollment for board action until overstaffing, overspending, and overstaffing, overbuilding, and overspending trends are reversed. You know, we were elected to make the hard decisions. It's easy to vote yes to a tax increase, but when you have to sit down and find ways to cut things out, it was easy to put them in. Now it's becoming so difficult to get them out, and we need to start that difficult process. Next, please. We need to assure that the Southmoreland School District is financially secure and taxpayers are treated fairly through the open and honest communications between all parties, the public, the district administration, and the school board. Times have changed dramatically, and we need to face the future as a united body to preserve and provide a quality education which is not in conflict with financial discipline and sound fiscal practices. Next, please. If we do not, we will lose what is very precious to us. Our children will be deprived of the great educational environment we are working so hard to preserve, in conjunction with fair and equitable treatment of our taxpaying constituents. Next, please. I attended a meeting last week of the PSBC, which is not to be confused with the PSBA, or whatever. It's the Pennsylvania School Board Coalition. And I'm just going to read this, because I found it absolutely fascinating when I went to this meeting. The Pennsylvania School Board Coalition is a coalition of elected school board directors and concerned taxpayers who are actively participating to reform their local school districts through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Our interest is not recruiting or endorsing any candidate for school board elections. Instead, we offer and share strategies and information to empower existing school board members, activists, and citizens to become leaders for reform in their districts. Next, please. The PSBC, not affiliated with the PSBA, is a group of concerned taxpayers based in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, who have found the currently identified problems of our Southmoreland School District are not at all unique in any way. Rather, at a present local seminar featuring PSBC officials, we learned that most all school districts, and this was absolutely fascinating, I mean, even the wording that these people are, from suits that have been filed, from agreements that they've made, even the wording is the same throughout the state of the problems everyone is having. Most all Pennsylvania school districts are facing similar budget and space management problems. New school members are indoctrination, all new school board members, I'm sorry, new school board members indoctrination and training programs often discourage critical examination and analysis of school and operational requirements. And I really got to agree with that, because having been on the board, it seems like you walk in as a board member, and there are things on the agenda, and you vote yes or no. Who makes these items on the agenda? You know, where do we fit in as board members in this process? And it doesn't seem to me like we're doing the job that we're supposed to be doing. The nine elected members are to rule the school district and make the policy. And it's just not done that way. You know, it seems like we have very little input. They find that the new school board members are being systematically encouraged to rubber-stamp administrative recommendations without challenge. Again, having been on the board, I don't know, maybe it's just me, because I'm always that one out of two votes that are the other way, you know? And it's always like that, rubber stamped. They strongly stress the need for new school board members and public to understand the budget process and to demand detailed budgetary information. Again, we've heard from the administrators to say, well, and from other board members, well, they're the experts, let them make the decisions. We're asking the questions, we can't get the answers. How much do we have? What is being spent? One time it's this, one time it's that. We need to see things in written form and not have them change from meeting to meeting. Most importantly, they emphasize that the pending pension and benefit crisis is not being properly addressed on a very widespread basis in this Commonwealth. Public taxpayer awareness and input are being stifled, resulting in a form of taxation without representation. And again, I think we see some of that. Some may not agree with me. I think people should be allowed to come to this meeting. We do need to have rules, we do need to set time limits, but I think, especially when we're talking about budget, which raises everybody's hairs on their neck and tax increases, we should have some leeway in letting the public speak. Thank you for your time.
The papers that I gave you are simply a copy of the page out of the Piper Jaffray Report. I took that book home, and I actually read it, and this is what's in it. So I copied a couple of the pages, just in case you didn't read the report. But this is where our statistics come from, showing that we have overbuilt, we have room for 860 students that we don't have, and these are the statistics. And the second page is the 18-year study, which was done by the school district, by the school district, showing teacher numbers over those years.
May I ask a question or two, Mr. President?
Sure.
Thank you. The 18-year study actually talks about...
Do you want to wait for Mrs. Reddick back there?
Oh, yes, I will make it quick, Mrs. Reddick.
Are you going to say that 18-year study is not valid, Jack? Is that what you're going to say?
No, I'm going to say it's an enrollment study and not a personnel study.
Not the one I gave out, is it?
Oh, the one I have here is an enrollment study.
No, I gave the teacher study is the one. You know what, that's a mistake, I gave that.
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Alt, do you have any idea how many teaching positions were eliminated since 2004?
Well, I've heard different numbers. I think the last time we had one of those biots, would 15 be correct?
Actually, if our recommendation this evening is accepted, there will be 19 teaching positions eliminated.
And then we, but we did hire some more.
No, that means in 2004, sir, we had 164 teachers. In 2011, 146.
I'm sorry, would you give that to me again?
I want to pass this out for you.
Okay.
It's going to be very easy for you. My second question is, the $100,000, and I certainly agree that we need to close the administration building, that's a recommendation that I have. That's one of the reasons we moved our board meetings up here several months ago, as a trial to see if a different venue would work. But I'm not sure where that $100,000 figure, what all that includes.
We went through the budget and took everything that was marked somewhere, it said administration building.
Utilities, landscape, whatever, the whole nine yards. So I mean, we close up and shut up the school, it should be about $100,000 a year, according to the line-by-line payments.
I was just curious, because when I looked at the utility costs for that building, they were less than 20. So I was just not sure where the extra $80,000 went to.
Everything involved with it.
Repairs and snow removal, and all of those things count. All of those things count. It's the best we could do from the budget.
I was just curious as to where the numbers came from.
From the budget.
All right, thank you. Those were my questions. Anything else on the budget?
Oh, yeah.
So, Mr. Sale.
Yes.
The money that needs to be taken from the fund balance as of today is $375,000, is that what I'm...
Yes. We have a 300...
That's with the tax increase.
That's including the tax increase, right.
And that's the whole tax increase?
Correct.
Like, what's 1.7 or something?
The tax increase, I believe, is $180,000 in additional revenue, and the deficit on top of that is $375,000. So if we raise taxes to the index, then that will be $180,000 less that we have to take out of the fund balance to balance the budget.
Did you ever do a budget without a tax increase?
Well, it's...
That's a yes or a no. Did you ever do a budget that did not have a tax increase?
Yes.
Did you see it?
Well, the difference is, in the $180,000, if you, if you don't raise the taxes, you need to come up with that money somewhere else, which is the fund balance.
Not necessarily. We just talked about closing the administration building.
Or reductions in expenditures, yes.
And we're not replacing someone at the cost of $66,000. So if our figures were even halfway right, you know, we're more than halfway to eliminating that tax increase. And if our figures are accurate for closing the administration building, we pretty much hit the number on the head, so we don't need a tax increase.
Well, referring back to what Dr. Monarch said, I'm not sure that your figures are accurate regarding the closure of the administration building.
Okay, what do you think is going to...
And we're not planning to close the administration building for the upcoming school year. We would like to close that beginning the next school year.
Why is that, Jack?
There are many reasons for that. First of all, we'd like to be able to plan the physical space where we're going to go. Okay, there may need to be some renovations done. If we go to the high school, for example, we need to figure out a way to isolate the administration wing from the student body, because there are people who come in and out of the administration building that we don't necessarily need to have access to the rest of the building for security reasons. The other thing that's going on right now is, we have a group of people in the business office, our payroll people, our accounts payable people, the whole financial system is being reworked, as you know, because we went through CSIU. That's requiring an inordinate amount of training and inordinate amount of learning and work. If we intend to be able to efficiently run the business office, we need some time for those people to learn the new system. Right now, they're going to trainings as of June 30th, rather than contracting payroll through ADP, we're doing that in-house. It's a very steep learning curve and a very complicated transition, and I don't want to put us in a situation where our whole business operation is not functioning as it should.
I have a question. Somebody brought it to my attention. And again, I really don't have any idea, so I'll put it out there. I thought the high school was built to separate the administration from the student population. So what, that's not true, that, you know, when it was built, it does provide for an area that would be isolated?
It currently does not, no.
No, it doesn't, okay.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I'm just asking from information I received.
Mr. Kropchak could speak to that. He's intimately familiar with the high school, but is there an area of the high school that is physically separated by lock, key, door, anything from a wing that's separated from the rest of the building?
Not specifically. Is there a door being more isolated?
Right.
Well, one of the things that bothered me, and again, maybe it's just the name, but to separate, you want to hire Echols? And why do we want to get a big architectural firm that's going to charge us out the wazoo to look at securing a section of the building?
I don't know that they charge us out the wazoo, as you say, because I have not seen an estimate from them, but I would like to talk to them and at least get an estimate of what that might cost.
Will we be putting it out to others?
We can do that. Echols designed the building, so they seem to be the logical choice to...
I disagree.
To, and you may disagree, doctor.
Maybe they would do a complimentary study for us, since all the business we've given them.
Don't bet on it, Jenny.
Doesn't hurt to ask. I mean, we've given them a lot of business, it's just a little study.
They've given us the business, too.
Mr. Kropchak, it would be that coming in the back, that doorway going down the steps, so just be coming across there so they could get up. That's the only way to get to the third floor, is coming around the back of the building.
Either internally or through the back, or you go into the auditorium. Up, it's the third floor, down, it's the auditorium. So that would be the only way to get in from the outside.
So you'd need something going across there before you go down the steps?
Why?
To go up to administration.
Why would you need that?
Why?
Is there a door to go in?
There's a door to go in, but if people can, if anybody could just go straight down into the area without keeping it secured from the rest of the students, for safety purposes.
Josie, this safety thing has gone to the extreme.
Is this a budget discussion, just for...
Anyway.
When you go to the administration building now, you have to get buzzed in. You'd get buzzed in there, and if there's somebody who doesn't belong there, you don't let them in, right? That's the end of that.
Anything else on the budget? And again, Dr. Fike, there are people who are buzzed into the administration building. We can control who's there, and they're there to see administration. We don't want them making a right turn, or a left turn, or a down-the-stairs turn, and intermingling in our classroom spaces.
You don't buzz them in. You don't buzz them in, that's what I'm saying. You don't buzz them in. If it isn't a legitimate person that you're either expecting or recognizing...
It's a legitimate person, and if they're legitimately visiting the administration, that's where I want them.
Right.
And if they're legitimately coming to the high school, they come in the other door, and that's where I want them. I don't want the two to be able to be mingled. You understand?
No.
I didn't think so.
I think what we're having here is a lot of excuses and not a lot of reasons.
Oh, very well.
I think that this could be done in two or three weeks. You've got people here to reconnect the computers, you've got, you know, this can be done. You ask someone who's lived in a house, it doesn't take them a year to move, and everybody's, there's always going to be something, there's always going to be some program or some reason not to do it. I think it should be done before the beginning of the school year. We don't need any architects. I think we have enough people here who can move, and you can store gates and doors and locks and things like that. That's something that would be reasonable. But to hire an architect is beyond, we're trying to cut costs. We're looking for ways to save tax money that will not affect academic education. This is clearly one of them.
I think we should look to our maintenance department for ideas.
Absolutely.
Anything else on the budget?
When are we going to get a copy of this budget that has all the cuts in it? All the cuts?
Your next board packet.
And you will not do a budget without a tax increase?
It's up to you.
Well, I've asked for one, I know Ken has asked for one.
Well, as I said, if the board does not wish to raise taxes, then it would be an additional $180,000 that we'd need to draw down from the fund balance.
No, you can cut $180,000. You cut.
Where do you propose I cut?
Here's one.
Should I, well, as Dr. Monarch said, it is a very inopportune time to move the administration to the high school right now.
There's never a good time to do that.
Well, now is an especially bad time, because we're transferring from a 25-year-old computer system to a brand-new one, and my staff is going crazy right now.
Can't they go crazy in the new building?
I'd really rather not lump in on top of them right now. And again, Dr. Fike, we have no idea what it would cost to make that move, nor do we have any idea of what it would save.
And that's something we should have been planning on. We should know. Why are we a week from voting and we don't know anything?
Well, because when I had originally talked about this idea several weeks ago, I said next year. next year.
That may be true, but it's been over a long, long time, even before you became the administrator here, Jack. It should have been taken care of a long time.
I can't speak to that circuit.
You know, Ken and I are at a real disadvantage. We're searching and researching and searching for ways to help, and we get nothing from the rest of the board. Not one person has said, "This is what we think." And then we get criticized. We get criticized for every figure we have and every document we try to research because we can't get anything from the school district. And even when I get it, they tell me it's wrong. I'm at a loss here. How do we balance this budget without hurting the taxpayers?
When have I refused to give you information, Doctor? I challenge them. When have I refused to give you anything you've asked for?
You give me information, Jack, and then you say, "Well, that doesn't apply to this." Particularly with Mr. Salem. We've asked and asked and asked and asked and asked. Why would he come to a board meeting without information about what he just cut? Why would you do that? This is our decision. We are responsible. We should be... There should be a list here saying, "It started here. We cut this, 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 this." You know, show these cuts. Show what the possible cuts are. You know, we've talked about declining enrollment. I've talked about trying to close buildings. We're trying to do the right thing without hurting the taxpayer and the kids. And I don't know what else to do. I'm asking the other board members, please give us some input here.
How come this wasn't done years ago?
Right.
And now it's done right now? And it's a big push to have this done. And you was on the board before, and you were on the board before. Why didn't you bring this up?
I wasn't on the board before.
How many years?
I've been here two. Been here two years.
Which I'm the one that was on. But can I...
No, Jack, but you could have brought this up before and pushed for this before. But no, it's a big push right now.
And you think I have?
My board's here over eight years. Taxes wasn't raised. So it's going to cost $5. Eight years.
What was the year before? You want to talk... 9.4 mils the year before.
That's back in the past. You can't change it.
They're still paying it. They're still paying it.
Yes, they're still paying it, but they're only paying $5 a year on this increase over eight years.
9.4 mils.
Can I answer your question from my perspective? And I did mention it either in the presentation or whatever. I sat on the board. Every time there was something brought up, for me, and again, it was just a select few, me or Tony Glizza, maybe one or two other people. It was always shut down. These are not new attempts. I mean, maybe they signed through here. But every time I brought something... You go back and watch old. The old chose if they have them, like, you know, if they have workout. You'll see that I brought up issues, and all I got was lip service. So, you know, now comes the point where we must make a decision. And we're just trying to get these things out there. You're right, they should have been taken care of a long time ago. But you have boards that never would vote to do it, which... Never.
Could I respond to something Mr. Alt asked? Dr. Scott, who formerly was the assistant principal at the high school, remind or inform me, I was not aware that originally the plans at the high school were designed for an administration wing, and those plans were scuttled to save money. And this building as well, I can clearly remember that there was to be an administration wing on this building, and that was scuttled to save money.
Okay. I guess there was somebody that did something from way back.
Did we not discuss, Mr. Lee? We asked how many, when it was talked about closing Alberton, the primary center. And what... They said, "Where are we going to go?" And they said, "Well, let's go to Mr. Lee's building." And he informed us that you only had two rooms available.
Okay, Josie, let's deal with that. Do you know the definition of a perfect gas? It'll expand to fill whatever size you put it in. We've got teen meeting rooms and parent conference rooms, and we've got this and we've got that. Four years ago, the middle school was built for 700 and some kids. Was it 700? There's 400 in there now, 449. The rooms are still there. It doesn't mean that they're not using them all. Sure, they are. They can find a use for everything. The rooms are there.
If 100 students came in tomorrow, we would have a place to put, believe that or not.
That's right. They're there. The rooms are there.
But they're just being used for something else.
I feel kindergarten and first grade is so vital that I'm not willing to make their class size 26 or 27 students, and we're never going to get the results ever, ever, ever if we change that, ever.
You don't change that, Josie. You bring the teachers with them. You bring the teachers and the kids with them.
Put two teachers in a classroom and you have 27 kids in a class?
You bring... What do they have now? What do they have now? They have 10, 15, 20 kids. Bring the teachers and the kids. We're not cutting class size, Josie. We're saying you bring the whole thing from there to here to save money. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Lee, how many classes do you have that have 10 students in, by the way?
10 students.
Yeah.
Zero.
15?
Zero.
Thank you.
Maybe it has five. We heard we have one that has five.
Yes, that's correct. There is one with five. And there's a reason for that. It's an autistic support classroom, and the maximum you can have in that class is eight, eight to one. All right? So we could send those kids to Clearview School. We could send those kids to Cleveland Heights School, and that would free up space that would cost a whole lot more money. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Anything else on the budget?
When this building was built, the middle school has room for 716 kids and it has 449. Did the rooms go away? Or are they there? When the elementary school was built for 700 and they had 570, did the rooms go away? And the answer is no. The rooms are there. Somewhere, those rooms are there, unless you've knocked down walls and taken them away. We are 860 students less than capacity of our building. That is not acceptable. And Josie, for you to imply that those teachers who can teach kindergarten in Alberton would not be able to teach it here is not correct.
I didn't say that.
They will do the same good job here.
They'll cut parts of my mouth.
The same good job here as they're doing in Alberton.
Anything else on the budget?
Yeah, I have one other question. I understand that we pay overtime to have these meetings here. Is this true?
Mr. Mizwa, would you like to respond to that? I think we have, on occasion, paid 15 to 20 minutes when an individual...
I'm just asking the question. Are you paying overtime for us to meet here?
Not consistently.
Ever?
Yes.
What's a minimal amount, Lee? 20, 25 minutes, half an hour maybe. We take down in the evenings if all of us live here, and they're timed. We block five sections so we have time to get in here.
Well, where's the overtime? My point being, that's another way we should not be spending money. If it costs us money to meet here, let's go somewhere else where it's free.
But why do all of them have to stay? I mean, how many... I mean, if you have three people, why do all three of them have to stay?
I don't know, Josie.
The overtime comes in with the person who sets up, in addition to her other duties. Occasionally, she's not able to get everything completed by putting time.
And that can't be worked out, Jack? Jack, we're trying to save money.
We're trying to save money. I get that, Doctor. Thank you.
So if we have to pay overtime to meet here, we got to move somewhere. Let's go back to the moldy basement. It doesn't matter. It's free.
Homestead-Farmstead exclusion? You'll be asked at the next meeting to approve the Homestead-Farmstead exclusion, which is something we do on an annual basis. Any questions?
Are the numbers, like, are we getting money, more money from this? Is that...
No, that's a benefit to the taxpayers. The gambling revenue is parceled out amongst all the school districts and state, and then the county tells us which taxpayers are eligible for that money. And then, as a matter of course, we tell the county how to alter the tax bills so that the people get that tax break.
So their rate will come down?
Well, yes. It's been like that for several years now, since gambling was approved in Pennsylvania. Basically, the tax bill is reduced by X amount of dollars. I think it's $205. And then the state reimburses us for that.
This is a property tax.
Yes, property taxes. Any more questions on the Homestead-Farmstead? We're going to property tax installments. Just for your information, the Homestead-Farmstead reduction amounts to $938,214.49. Property tax in installments. Act 1 of 2006 requires that we adopt a resolution for calendar year 2007 and each year thereafter, authorizing the collection and payment of school real property taxes in installments. So there's a resolution that would authorize our tax collectors to do that as well. We would ask you to approve that at the next meeting. Questions or discretion? We're going to Berkheimer, Act 511. Berkheimer has been collecting our Act 511, which in our case is earned income tax, and we would ask that they be, again, appointed as our tax collector. Also, Jack, prior to this, I've never been appointed the liaison with Berkheimer. And so my name needs to be added to their roles, and it takes a board action to do so. We'll add that to the motion. Old Business Policy 816. You'll be asked to vote on the posting of Policy 816, acceptable use of computer networks, digital technology, internet and internet safety. We would entertain discussion on that topic at this time.
Did any other school director make any comments on this policy?
I read all your questions.
Did anybody else make any comments on this?
Mr. Potonic made a couple of comments.
Okay, let's go with his, and then we'll go with mine.
What am I looking at?
Oh, it's a little typed page. There's a technology policy that looks like it's red and blue. It's red and blue, and then there's a paper that goes with it. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Potonic's suggestions, and as I read those at the meeting, we actually came up with one more word, Page 4, Item Number 7. And this is actually something that Dr. Fike had questioned, define offensive or in affront of the sensibilities of others. Mr. Potonic suggested language that uses these words that is discriminatory, hostile, harassing, based on sex, race, ethnicity, national origin, or disability. That is, and he's asking that we omit the word offensive, so that is bullying, threatening, obscene, profane, or vulgar in reference to bodily functions or inviting violence. And we want to insert the word sexual conduct there or illegal conduct, or that is otherwise unlawful under the standards of the anti-discrimination laws of the United States or Pennsylvania. And that is in... That's congruent with everything that's in our current discipline code as well. And on Page 6, Item 7, that deals with individuals who inadvertently access an improper or pornographic site. And what we were suggesting there was if that individual accesses such a site because of a typographical error, if they report that either to their teacher, their administrator, or if it's a teacher or administrator, to the technology coordinator, that site would obviously be blocked, and we don't want to certainly behead anyone for making an innocent mistake. So if they were to self-report, "Oh, my goodness, how did I get on that site? I'll report it immediately." We certainly wouldn't want to cause problems for them for that kind of a mistake. Mr. Potonic suggests that we add, or the deliberate failure to properly report to the teacher for another student, or to the network administrator for an employee concerning another's intentional access to that type of a site.
Okay, so my point on that one was inadvertently. What about deliberately? That was my question. What about deliberately? I don't think inadvertent is all. Am I crazy or something here? You know, I'm saying that we need to have some... That has to do with deliberate, not just inadvertent.
That's one that's a mistake.
No, I'm...
Well, yeah, Dr. Fike, it says...
Where is it? I must be looking at the wrong thing.
Yeah, it says on Page 6 of 11.
I must be looking at the wrong...
No, you're looking at the right thing. On Page 6 of 11, okay, when you look at that list, it says prohibitions, right? So that's a list of things that are prohibited. So it is prohibited to use the network to access obscene, sexually explicit, or pornographic material. Or it's also a violation of the policy if you fail to report it, if you inadvertently visit that kind of a site. So they're both covered there, intentional and mistake. So in other words, it's prohibited to use the network to access that kind of stuff, and it says it right there. And it's also a prohibition if you visit it by mistake and don't report it.
What if you see someone using it purposely and don't report it?
That's where Mr. Potonic's addition came in.
That's my addition.
One of the big issues I have is there's no user agreement, or did I miss that, too?
The user agreement exists in each of the student handbooks at each building. And I actually made packets of you with a copy of the middle school user agreement. I believe they're on this packet. Let me double check.
But don't you think when you have a policy, that should be a part of it? It should be an attachment?
No. There's a distinction between policy and operations.
Yeah.
Okay, so the policy says you have to have the user agreement, and then administratively and operationally, you develop that to meet the needs of your particular situation.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So this leaves it wide open to make anything up you want and call it a user agreement, right?
Well, I guess so, if that's how you look at it.
There should be a standard user agreement.
There is a user agreement, but it's not part of policy.
Can you just say, "See attached agreement and so and so's"?
And then, at what point in time does your policy manual do contain everything that you do, chapter and verse, on your day-to-day operations?
Well, everybody, I mean, if that's what, to make it look clear, if you want to say the user agreement filed in the administration's office or something.
You know, we have a 707 policy. All the forms are in there. There's like eight, like seven or eight pages of forms. They're all in there. It doesn't say, "Go see somebody." It's there because we refer to the fact that you must show your insurance and all that stuff, and we provide those documents as part of the policy. So are you saying that all those documents should be taken off the 707?
Are you asking my opinion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we should have done that then.
For example, when the legislature passes an amendment to the Public School Code of 1949, right? They amend it legislatively all the time. And then, once they amend it, we sit around and we wait till the Department of Education issues regulations. Regulations are not part of legislation.
They come out of it.
Right. So your policy is your legislation, and the regulations are things that come out of it.
So all that stuff...
You are a legislative body. You are not an operational body.
It's just convenient to have it there, I think, is what you're saying.
Wouldn't you think? Wouldn't you think, Josie? Wouldn't you think, wouldn't you think, Josie?
One of the things that is one of my goals for the forthcoming years is to develop a manual of legislative administrative regulations.
You've been saying that.
I know, I've been saying that, Doc.
I think the value of a policy statement in having that is, is that the operations can change from year to year. We look to the administration to make those appropriate changes from year to year. And I'm sure that, and if they're not doing it, we'll raise the questions here. But I think that's, there's a good reason why policy is policy, and that's what we do here.
Okay, don't put it in.
But this is the, this is the.
No, that's just information.
Yeah.
Now, the forms are last two.
The forms are the last three pages. And then, again, I use the middle schools as an example. Each building has a set of those. Any other discussion on this policy?
Did you say any more discussion on the policy?
That's what I said, yes.
Oh, yeah, I have a lot of discussion on the policy, as you can see. On Page 3, Line 8, and it says that you will cancel those privileges. So what happens when this kid goes into a class where they're expected to use a computer? Are they not allowed to use a computer then if they're, and it could be on the internet? I mean, it could be the same thing that is, that they were doing before. In other words, if they're removed from the, they're denied cancellation of privileges, and they go into a class, a computer class, what do they do?
Their schedule would have to be modified accordingly, just as students are excluded from class for disciplinary reasons, students are suspended, students are expelled, students lose privileges. The internet is to be used appropriately, and students understand and sign off on an annual basis that they lose those privileges in the event that they misuse the system. And it doesn't say they lose them permanently, but they are excluded for a period of time.
I think that should be clarified.
Up to the discretion of the principal.
I think it should be clarified.
Would one of the possibilities, Doctor, be that the offending student might be assigned an aide or someone to physically watch them while they use the internet as distinct from being part of the general class, where you're sort of trusted that you're looking at the right thing?
That would be a possibility, but then the employment of an aide would be an additional expense.
I agree, but if you already had an aide in the classroom, that would be a possibility.
If we had an aide in the classroom.
But if we put in there, just have the discretion of the principal, add that in. Is that what you're looking for?
Josie, I think it needs clarified. If a child is not allowed to use a computer, and don't we have technology all over the school? And when they go into a legitimate situation, I think it needs to be answered. That's all I'm saying. I don't know what the answer would be, I just think it needs to be answered.
And again, it says the internet and the network, so that doesn't mean they can't work process, right?
How will the teachers know?
I don't know.
Mr. Kropchak, how would, if somebody is going to be taking away their privileges, how does the next teacher know? They're going into the next class. I mean, what amount, thirty a pass take?
Okay, just as a point of clarification, principals, how many times have we had to exclude someone from network or internet use because of misuse of the system?
The other thing that I questioned was that phrase, the learning of legal, moral, and ethical restrictions imposed upon speech and the acceptance of criticism. What does that mean?
Well, I, the way I answered it is this expressive conduct and material transmitted by students via the school's network is required to be related to the adopted curriculum. So the development of writing skills is being taught in a laboratory setting, and thus includes legal, moral, and ethical restrictions imposed upon speech within the school community, and responsibility and acceptance of criticism for articles of opinion. And that was actually upheld in a court case, Hazelwood School District versus Coolmire.
I guess my question is, can that be more clear? But I'm too dumb to know that, so that's okay. My next question was a statement that says, consistent with the abilities of the student. How do you do that?
Well, we have an assessment program, so that gives us a pretty clear snapshot of a student's ability and their achievement levels, all right? And as you know, as a retired educator, anytime you're planning any kind of instruction, you plan your instruction consistent with the abilities and developmental levels of your students, do you not?
I thought that that was not, okay, I'm having problems here with it as being related to the use of technology. That's what I'm getting at. It's related to the use of technology, right?
Correct.
How do you know what a kid can do on there? I mean, these kids have cell phones that can, I swear, go to space.
It's not necessarily what they can and can't do on there, but rather what we're having them access or not access. For example, you're going to have a high school junior accessing material that is certainly at a much more high level and more age-appropriate in terms of the types of research that they're doing on the internet than you would a fifth or sixth grader. Does that make sense?
When I went in the classroom, I think it was Fred Dugger's classroom, all the kids were doing it. He had this nice thing, and all the kids were using it. They were all doing it, and they were all doing it.
Correct. But they weren't studying Barwin's Theory of Evolution, for example. But they might be studying in a high school biology class.
But he was treating all his students the same way, not saying you're lower than this one or anything. You know, that's, I questioned that, but again, doesn't matter. My question, on Page 13.
Well, would you prefer the wording developmental level?
Oh, no, number thirteen, I'm sorry, number thirteen on Page 6.
I'm going back to your previous.
Yeah.
Developmental level as opposed to ability?
Well, that's what I'm saying. He wasn't doing it according to ability. He was letting, all the kids were doing it. All the kids were doing it. And I'm sure that there were kids who had many different levels of ability in there, but he had all the kids doing it, which to me was the right thing to do. Let's go on then. On Page 6, Number 13, loading or use of unauthorized games. Are there authorized games?
Sure. Tractor multiplication comes to mind, division derby.
You call those games.
Yeah, they're games.
All right.
Unauthorized games would be Mortal Kombat, Thrill Kill. Games, there are games that are aligned with curricular.
Okay, I thought those would be considered academic materials and not games.
Yes, yes, some academic materials are games.
I guess so.
Absolutely.
And then, I thought there was something missing in Line 17.
There was, yeah. The word computer was missing.
Line 23, violating the legal rights of others, Page 7, Number 23. Did you address that in your?
I think Mr. Potonic addressed that, didn't he?
And then, on Page 8, Number 3, it says, any user identified as a security risk or having a history of problems with other computer systems may be denied access to the network. Who would that be?
That would be perhaps someone who attempted to plant a virus on the system.
An employee, you mean? An employee or student?
Or student, someone who hacked into someone else's email account.
Of course, my question was, would you be a security risk if you entered a school building on a weekend?
And my response to that, and I actually did write the response, they would not be for the purposes of this policy unless they tampered with the network.
Then Page 9, what are fair use guidelines?
I handed those out to you.
Is that what this is?
Yeah. We actually have a policy, and it has to do with copyright law. Let me see where I put that.
Okay, are you going to put this in the policy? Will this be a part of the policy?
No, actually, it's part of the previous policy, Doc.
But if we, it says we're subject to fair use guidelines, would they be defined? And should they not be in the policy?
Well, they are defined as, as a matter of copyright law. And I know I copied that here somewhere, I'm having a trouble finding it.
Copyright law literally are volumes and volumes of pages on the details of copyright law. Fair use is simply saying you can't copy somebody else's material without permission. But legally, it is a very, it's a very detailed kind of, and I.
Does this cover it?
Fair use covers it. That is a term that could be used in any court, that can be used in a classroom. Any of your teacher, English teacher can talk about fair use and comment in regards of copying or use of materials.
My question.
It applies to books, it applies to computer, electronic information. It's a common term in the industry.
Will we give one of these to everybody? I mean, the teachers and stuff?
They will take care of that. That's why we pay him a nice wage.
And Dr. Fike, it's covered in Policy 815 in pretty good detail.
You have fair use in there, okay. Then my, I think the last equipment I had was the definition of vandalism did not include equipment.
The word property is in there.
Yeah, violating any applicable criminal statute pertaining to computers, property, or electronic devices, including Chapter 76 of the Crimes Code relating to computer offenses, vandalism of computer hardware or equipment, would be a violation of that criminal statute, specifically the Crimes Code, which might include but not be limited to Sections 3304 and 3307. So it is covered.
This policy said vandalism is defined as a malicious attempt to harm or destroy data of the user, internet, or networks. It is, includes but not limited to uploading, creating. And I just thought vandalism would include.
If you look at Item Number 30, under things that are prohibited, violating any applicable criminal statute pertaining to computers, property, or electronic devices. So if you vandalize school property, you've certainly violated Number 30, so it is covered in the policy.
What if it's, what, you're not doing anything then for the kid that brings their own stuff in, right? No, be quiet.
Not at this juncture, and as I explained, talked about, this policy that we're doing right now is intended to bring us into compliance with the statute, that we have to do a little bit of training with our kids. And we will be looking at the policies that you shared with us from the IU.
Jack, did you get this?
And some other.
The PSBA bulletin.
I do not receive.
You know what, this whole thing, I'm going to ask you to take it. This whole thing is how to write a policy, a technology policy.
Great, thank you.
Do you just give it to me? Thank you.
Anything else on this item?
So this has to be printed on and posted?
We'll ask, no, it's already posted.
It's all right.
So we'll ask you to approve it on the 27th.
So it was posted with no changes or with his changes?
You posted it with no changes during the posting period, we're adding his changes.
His changes.
Yeah.
And your, the omission, the word.
And then the omissions that you mentioned, as well as the word developmental instead of ability. And then we will vote on it in that form. Other questions?
New Business Discussion?
Yeah, in the New Business, one thing I wanted to call to your attention again was the fact that we were recognized very nicely in the Daily Courier and Tribune Review in terms of our, being awarded a bronze medal from the U.S. News and World Report. So a few weeks back, we learned that we were third in the region and 11th in the state in terms of overachieving as a school district. And now, for the first time ever, the district was mentioned in U.S. News and World Report on the best high school rankings for 212 to receive the bronze award. Just to quote the paper article here, "The idea behind the report is based on the key principles that a great high school must serve all of its students well, not just those who are college-bound, and that it must be able to produce measurable academic outcomes to show the school is successfully educating its student body across a range of performance indicators." You may recall that we only received a bronze medal, and when Dr. Scott was talking to you a couple of weeks ago, he discussed why we got a bronze medal and a silver or gold medal. That had to do with our AP courses and college readiness. And we recognized that prior to this information coming out. And this year, we had a record number of students sit for the AP exams. So next year, we're hoping for an even better award there.
Dr. Scott, did you say that our economically deprived students at the high school were on warning status at the end of last year?
I mean, they are. That was the warning status for the high school. We're not making AYP. Mr. Kropchak, what, which, was that in math?
The economic weakness management.
Yes, we can't hear each other.
In math.
Yes.
So one of seventeen indicators where we did not make?
I've sat here very quietly while all this people law has been going on, and I think I want to ask Gail to define for me. Gail, what is the definition of an overachiever?
Why are you singling me out?
Because you are the one who's the cheerleader, you know, doing your politicking. What is an overachiever?
What?
What is an overachiever?
You come here with a political following.
Josie, what's an overachiever?
Don't answer anything.
Dr. Monar, will you define for me what is an overachiever?
An overachiever is someone who achieves beyond expectations.
Beyond expectations. In other words, they're not expected to do very well. And then if they do do well, they are awarded something, is that right? So what were our students expected to do?
Our students, based on the indicators that U.S. News and World Report was using, were expected to perform at or slightly below the state average, and we exceeded that.
Well, this is what, if you read this very carefully, it basically says, students who tend to score lower, okay, economically disadvantaged students who score lower. I find it a tremendous insult that the Southmoreland School District students are considered to be poor and stupid. I think that's an insult. These kids are not overachieving, they are achieving. They are achieving because they are, they have good teachers, and they are working hard, and they are doing well. I am so upset. How many years have you sat here and showed us these glorious PSSA scores? Three years in a row, right? So for three years, we're achieving all these wonderful things, and they still tell us that we're not expected to do it?
Dr. Fike, can we share with you all of our PSSA scores?
Right.
Sometimes they're not glorious.
They have been for three years.
Absolutely not. We have areas that we have identified where we need to improve. As an administration, we're always the first to stand up before the board and say that we have to have, in order to improve, you have to have a willingness to confront your brutal, honest reality.
Of course you do, but what I'm saying here.
And in certain areas, we are not performing where we need to be and where we can be.
I think.
We always target those each year.
Our students are not overachievers, they are achievers. We expect them to do well, and they have done well. And I think it's an insult for newspapers and magazines to say that our kids should not do well because we're a poor district, and if they do well, we'll give them an award. They've done well for three years. It's high time people stop saying that our students should not be expected to do well, and then give them a big hurrah when they do.
And that really is essentially the value behind why we have improved student achievement across the district.
You have improved it, but that doesn't mean the kids can't do it.
That is by accepting that even in areas, a matter of fact, I was talking with some of the administrators today about a conference in New York where the issue came up of 90, 90, 90 schools. And what 90, 90, 90 simply refers to, 90 percent minority, 90 percent poverty, and 90 percent proficient. So all across the nation, as we look at data, we are, there are pockets across the country of schools and school districts that have high-poverty students achieving at essentially the rates of all general peers. This happens to be one of those examples.
And you have to give someone an award because they're expected to do badly.
The Pittsburgh Business Times creates the category of overachiever, and they explain what that category is. And essentially, while we don't accept high-poverty kids performing low, the fact is, across the nation, and actually internationally, high minority, high poverty, that the facts are, they do not perform.
That's correct, but we're talking about Southmoreland here.
So in Southmoreland, what we have done essentially, and we share this information every year, we actually stand up before you and show you at each grade level and overall what the gap is between our economically disadvantaged students and our performance overall. And we can show you growth trends and have shown growth trends where we have narrowed that gap to where the gap ceases to exist.
But you don't look at our student body and say, you're poor and you're dumb, and so you're not going to be able to do it. I resent that very much. I think we have good parents and good teachers.
Who does that though?
Overachieving, there's no such thing as overachieving, except in your eyes. I can look at her and say she's an overachiever, but the fact is, if she's an achiever, she's an achiever.
Well, what the U.S. News and World Report has been doing high school rankings for 25 years, what they do in that part of the ranking is, they take a look at your poverty levels, they take a look at your minority levels, and they compare how your high-poverty kids do compared with other high-poverty kids across the nation.
I resent that very much in Southmoreland.
Well, it is what it is from U.S. News and World Report.
Yeah, right.
And what got us the bronze award is them recognizing that a greater percentage of our economically disadvantaged kids are proficient in math and. our economically disadvantaged kids are proficient in math and reading and writing and science-
Because they're achievers.
...than other economically disadvantaged kids across the nation. And the Pittsburgh Business Times does the exact same thing in their overachieving ranking.
Well, I'll tell you what, if I was the superintendent, I'd write him a letter and tell him to take my name off the list. That's an insult. You know, you want to talk about national trends, look at state trends. The Secretary of Education today stated that he went out, they're bringing in the Keystone Exams. They tested 90,000 kids in Pennsylvania who had already been in an Algebra I class, and 40% of them passed. They're saying, "You take your PSSA scores and drop them down to 40%, that's the true level of learning compared to the National Education, the NEAP." But, you know, sure, there's a lot of information out there, but I believe that these kids are not overachievers, they are achievers, and we have good teachers who take them to their potential. And I think those rankings are an insult, and that's just a personal thing.
I certainly hope our superintendent doesn't ask to have our name taken off the list, because I think that's something-
Go for it, Dan.
...that's quite commendable and something I personally am very proud of.
If I had a student in this district, I wouldn't be proud of that.
Well, I think it's an insult to the district that you can't give praise, but praise is warranted.
I just gave the praise.
No, you didn't.
I just gave the praise. They gave the insults.
If anyone throws cold water on anything, it's you.
Policy 249. At the June 27th meeting, I will be asking you to reaffirm policy 249. And I apologize that I didn't copy this for you in advance. I deal with bullying and cyberbullying. There's, oh, it wasn't with that, good. We're not recommending any changes to this policy at this time, but the State Schools Act does require we review it on a triannual basis. So I would ask you to review it, and our recommendation would be that we reaffirm it in its present state.
This is the same thing you passed up?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have bullying prevention programs?
Yes, we do.
Good.
One thing that a lot of schools, by the way, are cutting in terms of their budgets, a lot of schools are cutting their bullying prevention programs. We are not.
It's required, isn't it, Jack?
Why did it say eliminating, it said cutting, trimming.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay, they're doing less with them.
We have it at all levels.
St. Vincent is working at all levels.
Kindergarten up through 12th grade.
Right. It takes different forms, you know, at various levels. At the high school level, it's mostly through our crisis counselor. At the elementary level, decon program. Any more questions on that policy? Agape day treatment? We will be asking you to renew our annual agreement with both Agape day treatment and Adelphi Village for those students who are not able to successfully attend school here, either for disciplinary or mental health issues. Questions on those?
Just on, is this an all-year, do they go to school here all year long?
No.
So they stop when we stop?
Right. They used to go all year round, but they don't do that any longer. Some of them have like an extended school year in the summer, depending on the program.
Okay.
Tri-State Study Council? We will also be asking you to renew our membership with Tri-State Study Council. Tri-State puts on a number of workshops that we take advantage of. They also offer services such as employee searches in the event that you might be looking for an employee. Provide us with a good deal of information, so we ask that you renew their recommended, their membership as well.
Jack, do we take advantage of that very much?
Yeah, Dr. Scott, and I talked about that, actually, there's a legal roundup coming up in the next couple of weeks.
I mean, I'm a million percent in favor of it, I just wondered if we're taking advantage of it.
And we go to everything now.
Okay. That's nice.
But we do use them, you know.
Maybe this is very-
Yeah.
They truly are. They're way ahead of the game.
Lynn Hargens?
Mrs. Hargens, would you like to talk about food services?
I know you get a lot of information in your packets, but we did, and I did include information in your packet this month. Most of you will probably recall, last year, I came to the board in the summer because there is a law, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, that was passed in December 2010. Yes.
I don't think your mic's on.
This is a follow-up to last year when I spoke to the board. Part of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act that was passed in December of 2010 requires that schools review their school lunch prices every year and bring into line the price paid for paid lunches versus the reimbursement received for free lunches. So we are requesting, there is a mandated price increase, and I've given you several scenarios to consider. Now, part of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, there's a lot more to it. It's a 200-plus-page act that also requires USDA to revise school lunch regulations. And for this year, the school lunch regulations are changing drastically. I really, you don't have the time, nor do I, to tell you all of the changes that are coming forth next year. I am, a few of them I highlighted in your packet, and one of those is that the portion sizes of fruits and vegetables are increasing significantly, as are the types that we must offer the children. At this point, we don't know how many of these the students are going to take, how much it's going to be thrown away. This isn't a scenario that's just affecting us, it's affecting all school districts in the state and across the country. In addition to that act, we do, we'll see a increase in retirement expenses. So I've given you three scenarios for price increase. According to the formula provided by USDA, our formula comes out that it's mandated, we must raise prices by five cents. Given the other scenarios that are going to be happening next year, I've also given you an option for a 10-cent price increase in the cafeteria, and this is for paid lunches only, or a 20-cent price increase for paid lunches. Now, if you also take a look at the information provided, there are prices shown for all of the other school districts pretty much in the area. You may have seen the trip today, Connelsville is going up 10 cents, which would even take them up higher than what we would be at if we went up to the 20 cents. Similarly, Norwin went up 35 cents this year for paid lunches. Again, it's mandated for 5 cents. I've given you three scenarios. My recommendation is that we do the 20-cent price increase. If not, you're going to see me back here again next year, probably asking you for another nickel or 10 cents, because we have to evaluate this every year. So at this time, go ahead, if you have any questions about that.
I just want to clarify that you're going to 180 to $2.
In the 205 to 225, right?
That's correct. 180 to $2 for elementary, 205 to 225 for high school.
And that's only if you pay for your lunch?
That's correct. There are still a safety net for all low-income families to apply for free or reduced lunches. That doesn't change. So there is that safety net there for the low-income to still apply. Perhaps the price increase would even encourage more to apply that may be resisted to do so before. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just-
Yes.
...be on, more emphasis on, okay, fruits, vegetables, whole grains, okay. Do students have an alternative, is there another alternative line where they, where they can get other types of foods, where they, potato chips, snacks, I mean-
Yes.
...things of that nature?
The, at each school, there's a, for example, starting at the primary center, there's always another alternative for the students. At the elementary SES, we increased that to the lunch plus two alternatives. At the middle school, you're probably adding three or four. At the high school, the choices are unlimited. However, I will tell you, with the menu planning process that USDA has set for us next year, I see some of those alternative choices being reduced, just because, I can't explain to you, we have many minimums and maximums to reach, and that's why, without getting into it, but I'm actually having to count the number of grains and having to count the number of meat alternates, and we have a minimum and a maximum, and I can't go over X number of grains in a week. If I have a bread that's three ounces, I can't do that bread more than twice a week, or I'll be over my maximums. It's very detail-oriented and very complex for the menu planning. So I see some of the alternatives possibly being reduced next year, but there still will be alternatives. There are à la carte foods that the students can also purchase extra. I'll just throw out there, too, that USDA will be bringing out a competitive foods rule that is probably going to be as strict as the new guidelines for school lunches are going to be. Those were due in April, and they were not released yet, so. If you don't-
Why? You said about-
We would face, we would face financial penalty. They do come out and certify. There's a certification process for this. They do come out and review the schools. That's part of this act where we were reviewed every five years. It's going to change to a three-year process, but in that process, we have to submit a lot of paperwork to certify our menus, and it is basically mandatory if you're on the program because you're receiving federal funds.
So they're giving us money?
Well, we have all, we've gotten money all along through federal reimbursements. Now, through the certification process, we're going to supposedly get another 6 cents if we comply with the certification. Again, you've got to have everything in line and all your ducks in a row to get that. I'm going to add to that, though, there was a state incentive program that the governor is not funding for next year that is going by the wayside. So while we're getting 6 cents federally, but from the state, we're probably going to lose 2 or 3 cents, because there's the state incentive program for the nutrition incentives that we had, meat, or is going away.
Is it monetarily wise, I'm not real sure what I want to ask, but if they're giving you money-
Mm-hmm.
...and you say, "I don't want your money," and you provide that, and you can buy that three grains, or that grain, bread cheaper and provide, you, I have an idea where I'm trying to go, but is-
You're, are you asking, do we need-
...in a logical sense to accept their money, when you may be able to do something different and save money?
Well, you have a choice. You're either on the national school lunch program or you're not. If you're not on the program, you're not going to get any federal reimbursement for the low-income students that apply for free or reduced meals. You have to bring, develop your own program or decide what you're going to do in-house to do that. Now, because our free and reduced percentage is so high, that probably wouldn't be advantageous, but I'm hearing a lot of schools with lower free and reduced percentages saying, "Hey, you know, maybe we'll just go off the program." Being that we're close to 50% district-wide, we would probably be really disadvantaged to do that, because then we have a lot of economically disadvantaged students that wouldn't be able to participate in the program, or we'd have to find a way to help them out. Now, you wouldn't have to comply with any of the regulations. You could run your own program, but you have to figure out how you're going to feed those kids.
I think if somebody would actually do it, that people would look bad.
There's a lot of people talking about it, and what, you know, just because this is a very big change, so.
We need to stop taking the government office all the time as a carrot stitch. It's, you know, just throw that out there.
I agree, I, with what Mr. All is saying, I think, well, on the two lines, because I know you want to give and provide wholesome food, you want to provide whole foods, whole grain and all that. On the other hand, the kind of detailed mandates that come along with that, I really resent. And I think the federal government oversteps what it should be doing with local districts. I don't know if that's where you're heading towards.
That's what he's saying, yeah.
But I positively agree with that.
Governor Dubb, up in New York, tell him you can't drink more than 16 glasses.
16 ounces of soda.
It's absolutely ridiculous. People have the right to make their choices, it should be better.
They're taking away our freedoms.
This, the new system they have, it's just, it's very complex with the menu planning and the counting and everything. I can just tell you, it's going to be a great challenge, and all my peers that I talk to in the industry, everybody's screaming nationally, whether anything will be changed, I don't know. It, we're trying, people are talking about, should there be something at the grassroots level, campaign, but USDA at this point doesn't seem to be budgeting. Anything else?
We're just going to do that.
Are we good with the 20 cents, then? Does that seem reasonable to the board?
You've always been very conservative and tried to keep expenses at a minimum. At least by the time I've been on the board, you've done that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policies and procedures? We will be asking you to approve, this is an annual process, again, the Department of Ed's Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B, Policies and Procedures. It's about a 55-page document, and basically, it just says that if we are receiving IDEA monies, we will certainly follow the IDEA law. And I can certainly print those out for you if you need copies, but we'll be asking you to approve those as well. Mr. Swink?
This is, in regards to our budget, when we had a talk on our ticket prices for the upcoming year, I put a proposal together, I think it's in your packet, so you can look at. What I suggested, or what I'm looking at for this year, for our athletic admission tickets for football, is reserved seats will be $5, general admission would be $4, and students would be $2. And all other paid events, which would be all other events that we run other than football, general admission would be $4, and the students would be $2. And in that, if you look, there was on the bottom, I put together where there was 11 schools that we play, what their average ticket prices are for general admission and reserved, or for students. And you can see it varies from anywhere from the one school at $3 to as high as $6, with the average ticket price being $4 and $2. So I'm just asking for your approval or to propose that we approve raising our ticket prices for this year. We talked about generating additional revenues. We're looking anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000, probably just on increasing our ticket prices for the athletics department.
Charlie, if people can't afford pay-to-play, how can they afford more ticket money?
Well, this is one way that you probably generate the money that you would get from pay-to-play, by spectators coming in, the additional, most of the people would come anyways, that watch an event, it's an additional couple dollars to cover and allow the kids to play that maybe wouldn't be able to play and would still generate more money.
They're saying they can't afford it.
Well, again, Dr. Fike, pay-to-play deals with providing opportunities for students, raising adult ticket prices, you have a choice whether you come to a football game or a basketball game or not. It's discretionary spending.
Yeah, basically, if you don't want to come to the game, you really don't have to come to the game.
You don't have to be in athletics, either.
And we'll still run some incentives with football, you know, with season tickets, if you buy your season tickets, if you buy all five, we give a discount for one ticket free. So there's, there is ways to save money if you want to buy tickets, and there's some other things we're looking at for some discounts to help people that, you know, come to the events all the time, a way to get a discounted ticket, too.
Charlie, a lot of people come for football games, but a lot of people come for the band. There's a lot of people in this staff, the band, right, Josie? So they're going to pay more?
Right. Any other discretionary questions for Charlie? Again, this brings us into line with other schools in the area.
If you look, the average, I mean, there's, every school, probably six or eight of the 11 schools are $4 to $2, and they're all the same teams that we play, the Yawks, Mount Pleasant's actually a little bit higher, Shaloroy's, even Gable, Brownsville. So it's not really something that we're out of line, it's just getting ourselves in. And again, if there's something that you wanted to address, you know, we can, we can discuss if it was, if it's something you felt needed change. But to put us back where most of our competition is and where the other schools are, that's about, that's the average, $4 and $2.
More questions for Charlie? Thanks, Charlie. So that on the agenda for your consideration at the next meeting. The next item has to do with the playground at Southmoreland Primary Center. This is something that we've actually been putting off for a couple of years. I don't remember the last time that playground was surfaced, but I don't think it has been since I've been in the district. It's been almost 20 years. We have a lot of cracks in the blacktop, a lot of grass growing up through. It's becoming a hazard for the students. So we would like permission to get some quotes and find out how much it would cost to topcoat the blacktop playground area at the primary center to make it safe for our students.
Jack, we're talking about closing the building.
But that building will still be used by other public in the future, probably, you know, the Southmoreland-
Administration is not talking about closing the building at this juncture, because we do not believe that we have space for those kids elsewhere-
I see, okay.
...to do that. So we will be, our plan is to keep that building open for a little while longer. But again, that's administration's recommendation. It is- It is not us who makes that vote. It would be the nine individuals on the board who do vote that would make that recommendation. So we'll be asking for that approval.
Did you say, I missed it, what was the cost that you think this might be and what range?
We, Lee, do you have any idea what it might cost to top coat the primary center's playground area? I don't know the price of top coating. That's why we want permission to, you know, get that information, at least.
No, I'm all for it. I was just wondering, is it $50,000?
I don't know the exact cost right now, but I do have some work in mind.
Okay.
It's just information, it's not to do it.
Right. And again, this would be a top coat only, it would not be nearly the expense that it would cost to put a whole road in.
Are we talking about having an outside contractor do this, as opposed to our maintenance department?
I don't think our maintenance department has a paving machine, Ken.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Ceiling or?
No, no, we're talking paving.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Yeah, it would be a, what is it, when you do asphalt, there's a base coat, and then there's that top finish coat. So there's a good base there, but it's just in bad shape, and kids are tripping and falling and so on, so we'd like to get that looked at. More questions on that? Discuss requesting Echols? The last item I had is, we would like to request Echols, or if Echols is not satisfactory to the board, someone with an architectural or engineering background to do a feasibility study with respect to putting the administration on the third floor of the high school, what that would take in terms of the things we discussed earlier, converting those classrooms to offices, in terms of electricity, you know, whatever.
Jack, you mean you can't figure that out? You have to hire somebody to figure that out.
I'm certainly not a person who is capable of designing that, no, I'm not.
Well, I think Echols is an absolute conflict of interest. Like I said, I was forced to talk about it before, didn't want to, but they wind and dine you in Harrisburg. I think that's a real conflict of interest. It's funny, isn't it, Gil? It's a real conflict of interest.
Oh, you're ridiculous.
I am ridiculous. Did you hear that, everybody? I'm ridiculous.
Yeah, Dr. Fike, I actually listened in on a webinar about that very, about that very thing, and that webinar indicated that the cost of a dinner is generally considered a de minimis.
Yeah, right.
And that is certainly not considered a conflict of interest under the Ethics Act.
We paid for it, Jack. We paid for it.
I've gone to places where you've seen gates, like there's gates, can there be a track put up there, kind of like on a diagonal type thing, if I thought, then you can like check out where you get a track and then put that gate across.
That's the stuff I'm talking about, Jesse.
I mean, I don't know if that could.
That's what we want to find out. I don't know about gates or.
But I mean, if we've done a lot of business with that, maybe they would do a complimentary re, look at it and see. Doesn't hurt to ask. All I can tell us is no, and then we can go to the next step. It's not something that has to be done for the voting meeting in July or June, right?
No.
I mean, take it a step at a time, see, maybe they'll do a complimentary study, and if they say no, then maybe Mr. Mizwell would be willing to see, is it possible to get a track to go across there?
Then you have the Disabilities Act also, we have to figure out a way of getting people up the stairs that sit in wheelchair or wherever else.
We've got that thing on the steps already down there, you just move it.
When you're doing school, why doesn't there be a whole list of priorities or criteria you'd have to follow?
I just don't understand.
You think?
Is there any chance we could get somebody other than Echols in here? Because in the past, just like the maintenance building, it seems like everything, there's always something he runs into afterwards. The blacktop, just like down there for the maintenance building, it wasn't prepared right, and I don't know whether he was involved in that or not, but it just seems like every time we have a project, we have an overreach that comes into it afterward, and that's what concerns me.
Regarding the paving, I spoke with Mr. Echols about, or Mr. Spozzino about that, and the original plans were for the driveway to be completely paved, but it was the board's direction to only pave where they are now. I mean, I looked at the drawings, and it's drawn just like that. And Mr. Spozzino says that's to save cost, that's what the board directed them to do.
Who drew that?
That's just my.
Echols.
They drew it.
Yes.
You'd think they would make that recommendation so that it would not even look silly.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, who drew it? They drew it, Ken, they drew it.
In order to pay them, bukku, bax.
As is often the case, the board makes the decisions, the board decided not to pave exactly, the board decided to pave exactly what we have paved now.
When did that happen?
Yeah, I was just going to say, when did we approve paving to stop at a certain point?
Yeah.
You.
That had to be done last year, right?
It wasn't done.
It was done when the maintenance building was approved, and there were some cuts made to the size of the building, to the amount of paving. There was a great deal of discussion went on about that, and that was the direction, as I am told, and I was not involved in those discussions at that time, but I'm told that that was the direction they were given. But again, I'm not defending Echols, nor am I attacking them. My point is, I do not feel that I'm qualified, and not in front to our maintenance director, but I'm not sure we have anybody qualified to look at power needs, ADA issues, safety issues. If we have someone who is a licensed architect or engineer design that, and it goes wrong, and someone is injured, then it's on them. If we do it ourselves, then it's on us. And I would prefer to have a professional do that design.
In a public building like that, don't you have to have authorized people do this stuff, other than just regular maintenance people in our school?
That would be my understanding.
Because it's a public building, when you come down to it's an office, and we're going to be held liable if something happens like you just said.
But again, I don't, you know, if you want to use someone other than Echols, we can certainly, at the meeting, ask you to authorize administration to seek proposals from individuals who might be interested in doing that.
I agree, too. I think maybe if we have somebody else, they'll give us a better deal, maybe more of our business.
And that's fine with me, I need somebody, and I put Echols.
Well, the only thing is, up in Hethfield, who's your day news when you were up there? Is there anybody else around the area that you know might come in to give us a look at this? Besides this?
Any kind of architecture.
There's tons of them, oh, yeah.
Sure, when you call up the whole districts and find out everything.
Put an ad in the paper, and they'll respond. They're dying for work.
I would just, this is, it's fine to be bidding it out or looking at the options. I do recall when we did the high school, we took bids, we interviewed various firms, there were about four or five firms, and we chose Echols. People can have various opinions. I thought in regards to the size of that project, this project, the number of change orders, there will be some, that's, I think it's just a given, and I thought they did quite satisfactory at work, but that's my.
No, I would, if that is a comment you're making, I would like to say that I thought they did a very poor job, and concreteness is not in best shape. Our roof leaked, the stair treads had to be done a number of times, the foundation was according to what I was told improperly placed, and the concrete boards, so I'm not so sure that Echols is the best place to go.
Well, they subcontract out, do they not?
Sure.
No, Echols does not subcontract, Echols does their own design work. Ken, you're absolutely right about the stair treads and the ramp at SES, that was not a design issue, that was an installation issue.
But we've never let anybody back to do it.
Well, yeah, they have, the stair treads were.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah. I mean, I'm still waiting for them to come back to replace all the concrete, you know, which is another time and another issue, whether we've ever been reimbursed for the concrete that they were supposed to come back from the top all the way down to the street. Under Dr. Hethfield, that was something that we were supposed to be looking at, that the concrete was not properly finished. You know, you had cement contractors come up here and look at that and said that was the sloppiest job they've ever seen. My understanding before I left the board was that we weren't going to get that done from the school all the way down to the street. We haven't seen anything done.
And again, that would be the contractor, not the architect.
Right, and the pillars. The pillars, I don't know if you remember, but I think they were supposed to be slushcoated because of all those holes in there. Now, there were a number of different issues, and I've never seen them resolved.
Again, I wasn't involved in those conversations, but I can certainly inquire. More discussion on that? Citizens comments? We will be adjourning to executive session, citizen comments, Fred Collins again. I think Mr. Collins is not here. Jan Kiefer. Okay, thank you.
Can I just, so you're going to put out a request in the paper for people to come in and look at this study?
We will prepare a resolution for the next meeting authorizing administration to solicit estimates.
I had some items for discussion, this time I can do it.
Is it for public?
Yeah, it's public.
I guess.
Okay, there's an item in the budget for $15,000 for board travel, and apparently the deal is you just walk in and say, I want to go, and they start writing you out a check and making reservations. Is that right? There's no vote, no nothing on the school board if you want to go to a conference? But anyhow, that $15,000, I figured that that applies to the nine of us and the superintendent, so 10% of that would be $1,500, and I would like to donate.
Actually, it doesn't apply to the superintendent.
Well, I'm going with 10, Jack, in case you want to go, but I'm saying there's $1,500 in there that I guess I'm entitled to walk in and say, I want. I'd like to donate my money to buy snacks for the students. I'd like to request a budget transfer for that. The other thing is that I have, I asked this question before, and it has nothing to do with litigation. What has been the cost of our prosecution of Jan Kiefer to date? And I did call ahead and ask that question. What has been the cost of prosecuting Jan Kiefer to date?
I believe we've paid $1,364.22.
Okay. Now, I understand this will continue, so the costs will continue to go up, right? Yeah, okay, that's right. And I just want the public to know that, you know, this, it's public information. This is what we're spending because he sat in this seat instead of this seat, and that's okay. I was criticized at the last meeting very sharply by Gil Brooks, who said, you can't be a citizen and a school board member at the same time. So I called PSBA, and they informed me that you must be a citizen in order to be elected to the school board, so at all times you become, you remain a citizen and a school director at the same time, Gil, so just so you know that.
I'll make sure I make a note of that.
Make a note of that. But anyhow, the one thing I do want to talk about that I'm very, very upset about, and this, obviously, nobody else is going to do it, so I'm going to make a public apology. Several months ago, we brought people into this very room to have these roundtable discussions. And these roundtable discussions were to generate citizen comments that were going to be then typed up, and I think Dr. Morris said he'd categorize them, and the board was going to discuss them, okay?
You did receive copies of those, did you not?
Oh, yeah, I got the copies of them. I got the, oh, everybody got that. That's not the issue. The point is, they were never, ever discussed by this board, and in fact, you even said that, you know, that you would categorize them. What upsets me so much is I want the public to know that I wrote not one, but two letters to Mike Vince, asking him to take that public comment and have it discussed by the board. It was never done. This is clearly what we told you was happening, the Delphi technique, which is the end has been already established, you come in, they blow some smoke around, it goes in a trash can, and that's the end of it. And we tried to warn you, and that is what happened. I did write two letters trying to prevent that from coming out that way, and they were ignored. So the public, I think we owe an apology to the public for bringing them in here, you wasted your time, you wasted your time. Nothing was ever done or discussed with the items that all of you or whoever was here that day presented. They were typed up, given to the board, and that was the end of it. And I think that was a terrible thing to do to the public. We wanted to have, it was supposed to be a budget meeting, and we wanted budget meetings where there would be, you know, back and forth discussion and so forth. No, this was the way we were going to do it. And Jack, I think that was a terrible thing to do. I tried to stop it before it came out that way, that all that public input was a waste of time. It was never discussed by the board.
Anything else for public consumption?
Do you need a motion for executive session?
Motion for executive session?
I said move.
Personnel and just.
Will this end, will you come back, or is this?
I'll be back.
Thank you.
Personnel and litigation, lead by.
After a brief recess for the next.
Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?